It being 7:30 and maybe even 7:31, I'd like to call the order. The regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Alderman, the Town of Rancho Viejo. Cheryl, would you do a roll call, please?
A recognized calling present, Mr. Dorsett, Mr. Hufford, Mr. Lloyd, and Mr. Salinas. Recognize calling absent, Mrs. Lutens and Mr. Rusty Falk is sitting in for Dana Renfroth. So we do have a forum for the meeting.
Mr. Lloyd, would you lead us into the invocation pledge immediately? Everybody stand.
Father, tonight as we gather, I offer my last prayer, Wisconsin. I pray with a grateful heart, I pray with a hopeful heart. I ask you to bless this community and all who have served and all who will be entrusted with responsibilities of serving in the future. Let us remember this special prayer. God grant them the serenity to accept the things they cannot change, the courage to change the things they can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Let us remember always in our prayers, our military personnel that are serving all over the world and keep them safe.
Amen.
Amen. I pray that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started with the agenda, a couple of things I'd like to do. Serving the community as an elected official, as an appointed official to the board is a lot of time, a lot of effort, pay's not very good, but you do get to listen and talk to a lot of people. Generally, they're not saying things like, "Oh, good job you did," and how much we appreciate it. Most of the time, they're saying, "This morning, could you ..."
Can you speak up a little louder?
Yes, ma'am, I'll try to. And notice in the forum, when standing up, it helped a little bit. I'll do that. Being elected official or being on the board puts you in the public scrutiny where people can say a lot of things too good about you. Some of them are good, but a lot of them are requests and demands and so forth. But without good qualified people doing those jobs, this city would not prosper, would not grow, and we wouldn't be what we are. We are really fortunate to have the number of qualified people that have been on our boards. Mr. Lloyd is retired. The only way to get him off is for him to retire. If he ran for election, he would be here forever. What a job he's done. I'd like to present him with a plaque from the Town of Rancho Viejo. Sincere appreciations to Chuck E. Lloyd for his years of service to the town of Rancho Viejo, 2001-2007. Mr. Lloyd, we really appreciate your service.
I'd like to just take this moment to thank the people of Rancho Viejo for the opportunity that they have given me to serve the past six years. I feel that the council, past and present, has accomplished many important objectives. And I know the future is very promising. I would like to give a special thanks to Cheryl for always keeping me informed and on track. The council members for putting up with me. And to the mayor for being fair and giving me time to expound. And to my wife for infinite patience. We had another member that went off to planning and zoning. Mr. Wilson, Walt Wilson, we all know him. Come up here, please. Mr. Wilson has given up his time to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to present this plaque to him. Again, sincere appreciation to Walt Wilson for his years of service, Town of Rancho Viejo, Texas, 1998 to 2007. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you all very much. I'm not the customer, I am the public speaker, but I do want to tell you that I'll accept this on behalf of all of the friends that did not get this, and what they deserve to walk away. It was a great privilege to represent the town and its home and best work. Things look good.
Thank you. We've got another couple of announcements, and then we'll get on to the agenda. I noticed we don't have anywhere near as many people for the AEP presentation this month as we did last month. I don't know what that means, but that's the way it is. At 9:30 a.m. on Tuesday the 15th of May, we'll be canvassing the election. That will be the only item on the agenda, will be the canvassing of the votes. And that's at 9:30 a.m. on Tuesday, May 15. At 6 o'clock on Tuesday, May the 22nd, and these will be posted, they're regular meetings of the Board of Alderman, they'll be posted 72 hours in advance. On Tuesday the 22nd, we have the public hearing that's been advertised and will be advertised for the third time in the commercial appeal about the concrete shoulders for Bizarro through, I think it's 75 Bizarro, and for Hildago right out here in front of Town Hall. That will be at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, the 22nd of May. The last announcement before is there was a test done on our water by the Lutens because they thought they were having some films or some problems on their dishes and dishwater. And I've checked with Robert Burkhardt at V-Mud. We have membranes that have been broken, they won't be replaced probably until the end of the month, and we have too much calcium carbonate in the water. It had been running at about 200 parts, and it's running at 800 parts right now. So if you see that white rusted kind of stuff on your dishes when they come out and so forth, that's because of that, and it will be corrected towards the end of the month. I'm sure Mr. Lindon will be able to tell us a lot more about that, but it's, before this went into effect, this is the way the water was. It's improved by putting these membranes in, and now because of the parts broken or something broken, we're back to the 800. It's not harmful to your health, but you do need to clean your drains and so forth because it will build up that depositing block. Is that fair enough?
What do we clean them with?
Vinegar is one thing. I could do probably other than vinegar. All right. Number four on the agenda is residents' forum. Does anyone have anything to say, to speak about, other than those items that are on the agenda? Number five, approval of amendments to regular meeting of April attempt. They're in the packet. Does anyone have any corrections or changes to those? All right.
On page three, we were talking about the freemason bonds and the title. The minutes say 60,000, and it should say 160,000.
Okay. The detail of that is correct.
The detail is correct.
Yes. Okay, so we'll make that change. Any other corrections or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve them as changed?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, public hearing to consider the request and zoning change by Mr. David H. Flynn, E.E., agent for Mr. Anthony DePonce, owner, American MSO, L.I.C., general partner to the Rancho property itself, a single family to business. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak out on this change from single family to commercial? From single family to business? Yes.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Gonzalez, I represent the once-absent family in the crimes. And Mr. Flynn was here at 6 o'clock, I think he had the wrong time for the meeting, so I didn't have to announce that, he had somewhere to be at 7. But I'm assured that DePonce is in a meeting that was double booked with this one in Mac Allen, so I'd like to apologize for that. He just wanted everyone to know that his interest is to comply with the E-business ordinance for the zoning of that commercial zone area that we're talking about, that would allow a buffer between 1732 and the subdivision that Las Haciendas is out there with those residents on that end. I think that would be very nice as far as not having the residents that are off on that one end of that subdivision facing 1732. So it'll create a buffer visually and also sound-wise for them. And they're planning to do something very nice commercially that will represent Rancho Viejo very well.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I have a question regarding why he wants to do this relatively in a short period of time, being that this subdivision just basically just went up and it doesn't give, well, we don't have any residents there, but as she just pointed out, if I were a landowner there, if I had a house, I don't know, I bought it under the pretext that it was a residential, and now I've got commercial enterprises going.
You know, when this was done back a few years ago, this was all pretty well approved. We knew that they were going to have the commercial on 1732. And they thought at that time, and we did too, that that would be the best thing instead of houses and that along 1732. And I think it'd be great for the town that we do have something on that as a buffer from 1732.
From my standpoint, there's two good things about it. One is it's a security, enhanced security, not having houses on 1732. Number two is Brownsville, TTJ goes up to 1732, they're going to be, and I've seen their plans, and they've got plans for like commercial in that area. I'd rather us have the ability to put in that service station convenience store that no doubt is going to go there and be able to dictate what it's going to look like, rather than Brownsville putting one in looking like anything else and we have no control. That's my personal thoughts on it, is both the security staff going in from just the junior. Anyone else in the audience have it? Close the public hearing. Number seven, consideration, action on request of zoning change for all of the same things that he said. And this is locked 1 through 6, I did a week before, but that's on the bottom of the Resaca and on the 1732, south and west of the residential development. Any discussion for the, any questions for the members of the Board of Alderman? The Planning and Zoning, approved it on a, I'm going to say 5-0 vote, I think there were five people there that passed. It was unanimous vote. Recommended it to the Board of Alderman. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion that we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, consideration, approval of budget amendment. So, with these on the back counter, Cheryl, the budgets were, they laid out. The budget was, is in your packet, changed after we have, we're now into the six months. We have six months of actual history behind us, and the adjustments, although generally are not major, they're adjusted to try to give us a more accurate picture of what the budget should, is going to be based on the first six months of history. Now, on the list, everywhere there's a C, that's one that was changed from the budget that was approved three months ago. If there's, I could go over each one of them, but if there's any questions in the venue about any of those, please ask them. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget as amended?
So moved.
A second?
Seven.
All in favor? Number nine, update on brush pickup. There was a, I'm sure everyone in Rancho Viejo knows that we have brush that's being put out on the highway, on the streets, more than a week in advance of pickup. A person called me and says, "Well, you know, Craig, it is a little bad, but at least they're going to only be out there once a month." When used to, we had no brush pickup, it'd be out there forever. I don't know that that's true or not true, but I had a call, I had a second call, Chief Cruz mentioned it, and Cheryl mentioned it. So I tried it. Here's what we did. We rented a trailer, $25 a day. We hired a part-time person, paid him $8 an hour to pick up trash. He's working an average of four hours a day, taking it to the landfill and dumping it. We're averaging one trip to the landfill of about 1,000 pounds a day. We're doing that for two reasons. One, in my opinion, and y'all can say what you say, but in my opinion, we're doing it for two reasons. One is because people want to put their brush out untanned, at the right time. And number two, in some cases, they put logs that GMS won't pick up because they're too heavy, or they put more than five cubic yards out at a time, GMS looks at it, and if it's six, they'll probably pick it up, if it's 10, they won't pick it up, they'll pick a half of it up. So we send this guy in behind him to pick it up. And then, he's going out in reverse sequence of the pickup. So if Bizarro was picked up on the first Tuesday, on the second Tuesday, he'll do Bizarro again, the thought process being pick it up any of that was missed, number one, number two, any little amounts because there shouldn't be any. I'm afraid if the word got out that we were doing this, the people would just indiscriminately put their brush out. But let me go down the figures. We're paying him $8 an hour, approximately $280 a week. The mileage, we're paying him what the government says, and that's 48 point something, 48.5 cents per mile. He's getting about $100 a week in mileage. The landfill cost us about $10 for 1,000 pounds, somewhere around that. It was cheaper, and then they found out we worked for Brownsville, so they upped the price from 3 cents per 100 to 4 cents per 100. Charges about $50 a week for that. Forget the $25. If we were going to do this permanently, we'd buy a trailer. That'd cost us about $1,000, and then you put sideboards on it for another couple hundred dollars. But that's $430 a week, $22,360 a year. At what is now estimated as at our current evaluation in Rancho Viejo, it's little over a penny sales tax addition, sales tax, property tax addition. And why are we doing this? Because people don't put their brush out seven days in advance to pick it up. Now, if the money needs to be spent that way, so we can spend that money that way. A second thought, and if you'll notice, this is discussion, this isn't an action item. A second thought is, if we passed an ordinance that's like Brownsville has, that says, if your brush is put out more than seven days in advance, we're going to fine you. And we make that fine significant enough, it probably won't happen two times. But that's put in a law in place to train people to put their trash out untanned. I've gone door-to-door. Sometimes it's the same people, sometimes it's different. Sometimes the people didn't know. So every new resident that gets a new water supply in Rancho Viejo, I personally am going out greeting them, taking them a package with all the ordinances, explaining the brush pickup, explaining the laws of our town and that they need to, that they need to follow the speed limits, the stop signs, and all those things, explaining to them about building permits. So at least the person when they move in can't say, "Well, I didn't know that." We've had the police go by and ask all of the gardeners that they saw to come to a meeting two different times. The first time, we had 10 and 15, the second time, we had two. When I talk to them, they say, "Oh, I lost my sheet of paper, I forgot." Thousand reasons. I don't know what the solution is to the brush problem. We tried this. I personally think we shouldn't be spending our money that way. I'll stop and hear anybody else comment on it. Yes, ma'am?
How much do we pay GMS to pick it up?
We have a contract for $175 a month. That includes everything, including the one-day pickup. It used to be, I'm sorry.
We pay them more than ...
$175 a year.
Per resident?
Per resident.
Okay.
Not for brush pickup, that's trash pickup twice a week plus brush pickup.
Okay, so how much of that is the brush pickup, do you think?
A dollar a month.
Per resident?
Per resident.
Which is how much?
Well, if everyone took it out, because all of them don't, they're supposed to, we have an ordinance that says you have to, but they don't, but 75% of them do, that's about 750 homes that take it out.
Okay, so what's the math of doing it ourselves with the trailer?
150,000, see, 75,000 plus 15,000, so 90,000 a year versus 22 to fall behind.
Why don't we just get rid of GMS and pay the guy and save the money?
That's a ...
Who's picking up after? So if he picked it all up, it might cost maybe 50,000.
It costs you about 4 cents, 3, 4 cents, yeah, about 4 and 1/2 cents of property tax if we took it out of the GMS contract. If it's 90,000, and 20,000 equals a penny, that's approximate because that's what our appraised, 200 million is going to be what our appraised base is going to be.
You can do the math later. My point is, would it make more sense financially to not pay GMS, do what we're doing, and have more flexibility and keep it cleaner? And it wouldn't cost a nickel more, basically. That's just a suggestion. I'm not the answer.
And I've listened to Mr. Hufford say, "No," but then on the same time, I wondered whether that would be or not. I think the residents of Rancho Viejo would need to say yes or no on that. That's what I think. The solution to the brush problem, if there is one, I don't know what it is, and I've listened to a lot of people, and I've tried a lot of things. Anyone else have anything?
Well, I, my personal opinion is to have the town pick up the brush 100% totally and see for you. I mean, it would be a very expensive proposition. You can't get a rundown trailer and an $8 an hour guy, and the dump's going to start charging more when he starts showing up five times a day instead of one, and on and on and on. I believe that we've gone through this for a year or so, I believe that it is getting better. I think it's a matter of training the residents to put it out no earlier than a week prior to the pickup. They know when to put their other garbage out. Why can't they figure out when to put the brush out? Anyway, that's my opinion.
Mr. Brady?
I appreciate the thought, but what I see passionately, I agree, I don't like the trash out there, but I don't, you blame the homeowner because it's in front of their home, but it appears that it's their gardeners that are putting it out there.
Who hires the gardener?
I said you blame the homeowner because it's their, their house. So it's working not just with the homeowners, but with, as you said, you had met with the gardeners that are doing the work on here. I find it negligent on the gardeners, and I think, maybe you have to kind of look at it and have some more meetings, and maybe you find a gard, you have to put fines out, find the gardeners also.
The gardeners, the reason why we talk to the gardeners is we do have, as you know, a lot of absentee residents. We have Mexican National and Winter Texans. And the gardeners, they are hired and just told by the people who keep my yard and do the job. So, yes.
Well, before we had brush pickup, the gardeners were hired by the owners of the, and took care of it all themselves. We never had a problem like that until we got the brush pickup. Every household took care of their own.
Why don't we still do it?
Well, we, now that we've made it easy for them by with the brush pickup, they figure, "What the hell, I'll just put it out in front and they'll take care of it." But before, they had to pay for it themselves, and it was well taken care of.
Yes?
Monica Castle, 516 Viejo. We had a different problem before, that was nobody took care of their yards. So, I think it's just, people can't figure out what day to put the brush out, they should be fined, it's as simple as that. It's just like putting garbage out, you know, four days ahead, or having a messy yard, or whatever. I paid every time I needed to trim my trees and haul stuff away, it cost me $100, $125 every time. Now, it costs me $12 a year, or $24 a year, whatever number you want to use for a month that went up. That makes a lot more sense to me than me having to pay 200, 300, $400 a year to have my trees trimmed and hauled away. It's a no-brainer, all you have to do is think of them. I had seven palm trees trimmed, and I did it on Sunday, and I had Tuesday pickup. I saved a couple hundred dollars because GMS is picking it up for the contract price as opposed to paying him to have to haul his stuff away.
Yes?
I agree with him and a couple of the other people that have mentioned, we just need to start enforcing our ordinances. We have ordinances on the books already, we just need to start finding people, and sooner or later, they'll get the message.
Unfortunately, we do have ordinances on the book, but the ordinance says that we'll pick it up, charge them the cost of that, plus file a lien. I think that we ought to change the ordinance to have a daily fine. It ought to be $200 a day, $100 a day, and they ought to be sent, come before the judge and go there. The other thing is we have to send a letter out under our ordinance, give them 10 days to respond to that letter, and then do something. So for those 10 days, which by the time we find out about it, then we've got 10 days, and then we write the letter to you. It could be 12, 14, 16 days before it's picked up. And then it costs us money to get it picked up. We put it on as a lien, the lien goes on the property, we never get paid for it unless they sell that property.
Along your earlier comments about, you know, some people just don't know, or because they're either weird Texans or whatever, I agree that there should be some latitude for the first time, be it five or 10 days, because if it's out two weeks before, it is 10 business days before. So I think that needs to be kept in, but only one time. And then after that, like you said, $100, $200 a day, they'll get the message.
Okay. Unless somebody objects, I really think that we ought to quit this test that was called in. Quit spending the money to do it, start working on an ordinance.
Yeah, we're already paying, why should we take one?
Yeah, we should, we should. It's not an action item, but I did it without request, I'll stop it without, okay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
Marie Phillips, $28 out of. Let me just mention also, and I don't know what the answer is.
Okay.
But let me just mention also that the demographics of Rancho Viejo have changed, and not everybody are retirement people. And some people do work in their own yards, and they have to work around their schedule. And when a family with maybe children at home has the time to work out in their yard and the weather's acceptable, it may not coincide with the time to pick up the brush and therefore those ... and therefore those families need a, a place to put their brush until it is time. You understand what I'm saying? So, that's something for us to think about as well.
Let me tell you, I can give you the streets that do it what I think is the proper way. I can tell you houses that do it what I think is the proper way. And I can also tell you the streets that I think have no conscience.
Talking about Bellmore, aren't you?
But, if you drive down the streets, you'll notice a lot of people that ran into the very problem that you have, that stacked their brush up beside their house or in their backyard. And then they move it out to the street, only when it's that week or the day before it does it. Uh, I've done it that way, I've seen a lot of other houses that do it that way. Big difference. One house has a great little area with trees in front and behind it that they just stack it up right there, and then they pull it out when it's time for the, uh, for their pickup on their street. So, you know, we make it sound like everyone's not doing it. There are a lot of people that are doing it correctly and trying to do it correctly. But your point's well taken, that it's not always convenient. And also, when there's a big wind, the palm fronds come down, what do you do? You go reattach them. But if you put them by the side of the house, it won't get the same appearance with the brush out.
Mayor, I just wanted also to make a comment, that if these people just basically bundle it up, GMS will pick it up on a regular schedule. So, there's, I mean, there's really a latitude within the current system, it's just, some people don't wanna pay attention, I guess.
I got a comment from a lady that says, "Since we're having to pay so much more for brush, I'm not gonna buy those heavy-duty plastic bags that I need to put my grass clippings in and leaves in. I'll just stack it up and let GMS take care of it." That's, I mean, what an attitude. Hundred and twenty-six dollars before the new contract, a hundred and seventy-five dollars after the new contract. Now, you're gonna hear twenty different rates about what it is, but those are the actual figures before sales tax. Four dollars and eight cents increase, and as y'all know, the insurance and all that stuff. The plastic sacks wouldn't, wouldn't be that bad of a deal, I mean, it's a, it's a bargain. All on the brush? Number ten, update on Bizarro concrete shelter project. We had bids come in, we had a bid opening, uh, Monday at ten. And we had three people bid on the, on the contract. And this contract is for approximately seven thousand one hundred and fifty feet, which will be less than that by the time you take the sidewalks out of Bizarro, and about five hundred feet on Hildago right out in front of town hall. The three bids were P and G at eight dollars per linear foot, G and T at thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents per linear foot, and R and R at fourteen dollars per linear foot. Thirteen ninety-nine and fourteen dollars.
Y'all figured the same thing?
Yeah, that's right. Well, the eight dollars obviously is way low bid. They're the same people that hid the shelters over on Pima. So they have some experience, and we have some experience seeing their work. The problem is, is that this person is small company, he's tied up, he did not submit a bid bond with it. The other two did. We talked to Mr. Renfro, Mr. Renfro says we could let him either write a cashier's check for five percent of the total bid amount, or submit a bid bond and accept his bid. And then take a payment bond, once he signs the contract, and give him the bid bond back. If it's a cashier's check, we give it back to him. So, we're in the process of negotiating that right now. We have a meeting on the twenty-second, public hearing on the twenty-second of May at six o'clock for everyone from Bizarro to come in and say what, what they think about it. And we, we've advertised that three times by that time. So, assuming P and G, and, and what that comes out to, those footage that's in the paper, that comes out to sixty-two thousand dollars. And if you'll remember, on the Bizarro side of it, the city was willing to split the cost on that test case fifty-fifty with the property owner. So we'll need to sign a contract with all of the, the people on one through seventy-five Bizarro in order to get this implemented. And those people that won't sign a contract will have to, uh, assess them. And that will be done on a fifty percent basis. So if you say that the normal lot has seventy feet, not counting driveway, in front of their house, at eight dollars a foot, a linear foot, it will cost them about five hundred and sixty dollars. We're gonna allow terms on that. If they pay it on the front end, there will be no interest, if they pay it over a period of time, there will be interest.
And we're advertising this for Bizarro, is it just the Bizarro people or the rest of the town since they're, um, wanting to do it fifty-fifty? Because obviously, it's gonna affect everybody else.
Yes, yeah. At the Port of Alderman, we have to make that decision. If you remember, when we brought it up the first time, we were going to do that, and Mr. Renfro said we could not do that. That each one of them had to be done individually because we have to have prices before we do that.
On the notification?
On making a, a, uh, an agreement that we're gonna do fifty-fifty on the rest of the properties.
Okay, so, so we, we have to take it before everybody, or we're gonna do it?
We have to take it before everybody, you have to have a public hearing, which means you have to advertise it three times, et cetera.
That's what I'm, that's my point.
Yeah. It's, it's a shame, because that gets very expensive, advertising. Yes, sir?
Your math was wrong, Craig, it's only, based on the city paying fifty percent, it's only two hundred and eighty dollars a lot on average.
Yeah, that's correct, it's five hundred and sixty dollars in total.
It's gross.
Two hundred and eighty. And, and some are gonna be eighty feet, some are gonna be sixty feet. You've got driveways that circle in and out, you've got all kinds of areas.
It varies, but, you know, you can look at under three hundred dollars on average.
That's correct. Number eleven. I think this has been discussed before, but discuss swimming pools without fences on golf courses that are grandfathered. It's been a, a lot of comment on the swimming pool on number seven on the outlook about it being a, uh, a health or safety risk for the residents as well as for the golfers. The residents because it's a good spot to slice a golf ball into. And for the, uh, I don't know why for the golfers so much, although that was part of the question. Maybe they were inebriated when they were driving through it, that were part of it. But, or fall in looking for the golf ball, or reach in and fall in trying to get in the golf ball. I don't know what we can do about it. With golf, do you know anything, is these grandpops swimming pool without fences allowed?
I think the only, the only thing that you can do is, uh, is make sure that there's an ordinance in place if there's ever a change to it.
There is an ordinance in place now that requires it, but their grandfather did. And the, the other one is on number five on the outlook.
Right, I, I think the only other way would be to, to condemn it for some reason, but I, I don't see that you've put on a very good case for condemnation yet.
Can it be changed to like, uh, if, if, uh, new owners to the home or something like that?
No, it's usually a change in use that will, uh, will cause the, uh, or will activate it. In other words, if somebody came in and wanted a, a building permit to make some kind of change to it, you might be able to, uh, uh, to bring in, uh, in the new ordinance. But if it just stays the way it is, uh, I don't think you're gonna have a-
Couldn't you make an ordinance like if it was sold to a different person, they came in, that, that grandfather would be out?
I, I'd have to look at that, but I think it's going to be based on, on how you are using it. As long as it's being used as a swimming pool. Now, you may be able to come up with, uh, some health, safety and welfare issues that will cause them to, to put fences around it. I think the, uh, the Texas Health and Safety Code has certain requirements for, um, for having fences on there. But, uh, well, yeah, I, I know insurance is, has gotta be killing them if they're, if they even have it. But, uh, unfortunately, it'll probably take somebody drowning in it to force the issue.
Well, I think the best thing-
Can you bong the ears?
I think the best thing we could do is try to negotiate with people. I know last time we got more than this, right? I think Cheryl, that some people decided to put fences up after being talked to. So, we'll try that approach. And if not, then we might have to go to legal counsel and see what we can do about it.
Craig, does that leave the city liable at all?
I don't know.
If it's on private property, that's, it's not a, a city issue.
Even if we require on all swimming pools now, other than those that were grandfathered?
Well, if they're grandfathered, then they don't have to comply with the ordinance.
So the fact that we see it as a safety issue now doesn't put us in a legal situation, knowing that we have those out there that were grandfathered?
I think it's going to take an event in order to trigger them.
Yeah.
If, if, if they were built in violation of state law, does Cheryl, would you remove the grandfather? If, if, was there nothing here before nineteen seventy? If there was a state law in place that said that all swimming pools must have fences?
I don't think there was at that time, though.
Really?
Correct.
Number twelve, consideration of resolution changing member of early voting ballot board. Uh, Resolution nineteen, one ninety-seven A, a resolution appointing a new member of early voting ballot board. Whereas Catherine Hinosa was appro, appointed a member of the early voting ballot board on April the tenth, two thousand and seven, but now is unable to serve. Now therefore being resolved and ordered by the Port of Alderman of the town of Rancho Viejo, Texas, section one, let's, uh, let Tasia, who clearly am, shall be appointed as a member of the early voting ballot board. And we need to pass that resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Number thirteen. Follow-up report from AEP representatives on the electrical power reliability improvements and questions and answers session. Before they get started, one of the things that I said that I would do, in addition to what AEP said that they were gonna do, was to find out about certifying another utility company for Rancho Viejo. I talked to Mr. Jess Trotton at the Public Utility Commission, and the state passed a law in nineteen ninety-nine that does not allow two utility companies to be certified for the same area, other than those that are grandfathered in. But you cannot certify the second utility company where you already have a utility company certified. You can decertify the utility company that you have, and then certify a new utility company. The bar is real high on decert, decertifying. They've not done that yet in the state of Texas, so they don't know how high. I asked them if fifty-three power outages in the first quarter of this year met that level. They weren't sure. But, they have another mechanism, and that is that they find the utility companies when they're not performing up to the standards that the state of Texas said, when they instituted that law in nineteen ninety-nine. We could surely go that route. We surely have that opportunity to go that route. If we have the problem that we had in the first quarter and last year, we can also try to decertify. That's the negative of it, negative of this conversation. And I don't wanna start the negative. I wanna find out what AEP has done to ensure us that our power is stable. Please, explain that to us.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. My name is Jerry Don Wilson, I'm the beauty affairs manager here in West Laco with American Electric Power, Texas. And I thank you very much, Mayor, and the council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here tonight to talk to you with our follow-up meeting from last month. We told you that we were gonna come back and talk to you about some unanswered questions that we had on the table that we needed to really visit you folks about. We're here tonight to do that. And we're a good utility company, we are. Unfortunately, we just had some major problems here in the Rancho Viejo area. It was unfortunate. But we have, we have fixed those problems. And we're gonna explain that tonight. It's gonna be much better, what it was. But I'd like to introduce you to the players that we have here tonight that are gonna give you the presentation. And that is, the first one is gonna be Buddy Finch. And he's gonna talk to you about the distribution things that have taken place within the last couple, three weeks here at Rancho Viejo and the surrounding areas, not only with the city, but the surrounding areas also. Then we're gonna have Pete Gonzalez, which is our transmission line slash, uh, I guess you got substation engineer. And he's gonna talk to you about the transmission issues that we've also had with Rancho Viejo. And then, we've had some questions last time that we had about the phone center. So, we're bringing in Betty Katie, she's our supervisor, great lady too at that. I mean, she's got, I mean, this lady is on the ball constantly with that phone center. So, any questions that you have, you need to talk to her about. She's the supervisor of the customer solutions center in Corpus Christi. And then we have our three folks here lined up right here, yellow, blue and striped here, that's gonna answer all your questions that you have here tonight. And this is Rick Schuber, and he is our transmission line manager out of Corpus Christi, Texas. Then we have Gonzalo Sondiab, which is a hometown boy, he's from the valley. And, uh, he is the director of transmission lines here in Corpus Christi, and he takes care of West Texas Utilities also. It's not West Texas, it's Texas North Company. And then, of course, we have Julio Reyes, which is the vice president of external affairs in Austin. He's my boss's boss, so glad to have him here tonight. And I thank y'all for the opportunity, we really appreciate it. Let's go ahead and slide them there. We got the ones that didn't show up, the momentaries, you know, within seconds. Uh, we've got those tonight, we'll give you that amount. And with proactive and regular maintenance program on electric facilities, the question was asked several times, "Do you don't have any type of maintenance program here?" Well, we do, and we do, and we're proactive at that. And we have regular maintenance program on all electric facilities. We just had some unforeseen problems with the, with the transmission lines and the distribution lines in this area, but we've got a lot of that solved. Our investment in the Rio Grande Valley growth, which is not only in this area, we wanted to let you know all the other growth in the other areas here in the valley that we're doing. Fourth one? The call center, and how it operates. There's several questions about the call center last time, and some of those questions we couldn't answer. So we've got a lady here tonight, the supervisor, to answer those questions if you have. Next slide. Okay, this is how electricity is produced, right here. You start out with number one, which is your generating stations. Generates electricity, it could be gas, it could, it could be hydro, it could be nuclear, it could be coal. But it transfers from that to number two, which is the transmission lines, which we have here. And that was some of our problems here that we had in Rancho Viejo, was we called the transmission lines. We've got that taken care of, and they've got some more interest to give you tonight. And three, from transmission lines, we go down to the substations. Which Pete is here tonight, he's our engineer, he's a special- tonight, he's our engineer, he's specialized in this, and he's gonna talk to you a little bit about the substation. One of them is Cabasos we had. And the other substations, the new ones that we're gonna install in this area, that's gonna be good backup for Rancho Viejo, in case we do lose a one-sta substation, we can follow up and tie into another one. And your fourth one here is distribution. This is your lines right along the highway that you've seen, and you saw those bucket trucks one day out there because we, there was a crane that came across here, and we lost it, and we had all those bucket trucks running across the highway there trying to restore that. And then, of course, from the distribution line here, where you've got Buddy Finch and all of his workers taking care of you locally, we go to the houses here, and that's Mayor Flood's house, and his lights are on too. We're fixed.
It's not working?
Not magic, this thing. Okay, where's Buddy?
Can I point you?
It's not Buddy, you only change that.
Okay. This is, well, here's Rancho Viejo in the middle of this transmission distribution system that we have. Here's La Palma San Donito, is where there's a big generator there. The red is our hundred and thirty-eight KV lines, which goes to Union Car, the old Union Car by Portizaville, P V contact, P V contact, P V contacts, military highway, to our temporary station out on seventeen thirty-two, we call them that Cameron Station. And then you've got the green lines, which is the sixty-nine KV lines, which is what Rancho Viejo is being served from right now, out of La Palma, which goes to Los Fresnos, Brownsville, Brownsville switch, comes over here, goes back to Cabasos Substation, which is O C B thirty-five sixty, which is what's serving Rancho Viejo right now. So, that's just a basic on what we have around Rancho Viejo. The black is the twelve KV lines, which is the distribution feeders that come into this area. We, we're serving half of Rancho, O C B thirty-two hundred, and the other half out of Cabasos thirty-five sixty. This is what it looked like a month ago. This is our Ostrelo Substation, this is how it fed Cortez, Main, Rancho Viejo Drive, and Tesoro back through the brush north of us here, and up into Enchilada.
Escudero.
Yeah, Escudero.
Or the San Ana.
Yeah. And the next one, and this is how it's served now, we're serving all of Rancho Viejo out of thirty-five sixty out of Cabasos Substation. And then we have this Cameron Station here, in case we have any problems with the Cabasos, we can switch over that real quick. And that's one of the changes we've done since our last meeting.
So, if one of our lights go out, everybody's go out?
Uh, no, only if we lose the main feeder, which is not too likely.
Fair question, but is networking with Rancho Viejo, it makes no sense under grid because, or either my power can go out, every one of my neighbors within a block has got power, but a friend of mine lives a mile down the street on the same road, is without power, and a person a mile the other way is without a power.
Yeah, can you back up to, back up one?
It makes no sense when your grid works at-
Well, we've changed that, and that's this picture right here. All of Rancho Viejo now, all of your neighbors are served off of the main feeder, you're served off of-
That's the main feeder.
Yes, sir, we've changed-
What about the subs within the-
Well, and that's, you know, we have, we have isolation points throughout our system, you know, where we'll minimize outages by, you know, if we lose some wire down here, everybody doesn't lose an outage, just that little area does.
Yeah, well, that little area is a house here, a house a mile over there, a house a mile over there, a house a mile-
Joe, back up one more.
That was last-
That was the last one.
See the blue there? That was the way it was being served. Tesoro in that area in the back there was being served out of Los Fresnos, thirty-two hundred, and so was Cortez in the area at the main entrance of Rancho Viejo Drive. Bullens, a part of that.
Part of Bizarro was also there.
Yeah.
Part of Bizarro, yeah, it was, it could, you know, like, for example, where I live and where Pedro Galvez, we'd be having the same outage, and in between they'd have power.
You can see it right there.
If you look at that, you can see-
See right there? That's Cortez, and, and there's Bizarro right there.
And we both do have Bizarro.
Well-
It's bad for two places.
Bizarro's got slow lines and-
I understand it, but my, my neighbors on the other side, we told you this town's had power.
Yeah, the dividing points were, you looking next to somebody, they were on a different circuit, but it's not that way anymore.
All right. We'll see.
Well, yeah, we have this, I think almost in my, next slide, please. This is, yeah, if you can get the next one, Rick? Okay, this is how it was, this is thirty-two hundred, which is what was serving part of Rancho Viejo. And we had thirty-one reported outages since January of oh-six, which included momentary transmission, distribution outages, this is everything, okay? This is Cabasos, how it was performing. We had thirty outages on hand from January oh-six to present, the same distribution momentaries, I mean, transmission momentaries and distribution outages. Here's the transmission line serving both, both La Palma-Brownsville, which was serving Los Fresnos Substation, which is the thirty-two hundred and eleven of them. There's twenty-two outages there. And that's from January oh-six. That's been fixed. This is our maintenance that we did last year, oh-six. We patrolled all of our underground system here, all of our pad mount transformers, switch gears, pole boxes, pedestals, everything. We found sixty-six pad mount transformers that were in need of replacing. That's like thirty percent, something like that, which we replaced. Eleven secondary pedestals out of two hundred and seventy-eight. Four primary enclosures, which included, included switchgear and pole boxes, and one more pad mount switchgear out of eight that we have out here. Cabasos, this is proactive stuff. All overhead distribution facilities, including poles, transformers, wiring equipment, patrolled and inspected in oh-five. It's also been inspected, all of our overhead, thirty-five sixty has been inspected the last three weeks. We've been working on inspecting that from our Cabasos Substation to right out here in front of City Hall. That's all been inspected. We're working on, I think we found three or four different things there that could have caused an outage down the line, and we're in the process of getting those fixed. Thirty-two hundred, this was, we had patrolled all of that in two thousand and two, all the overhead, and done all the repairs and stuff that we found any problems with at all. But again, we're not on thirty-two hundred anymore here, we're on thirty-five sixty Rancho Viejo.
Yes, sir.
All overhead underground distribution facilities serving Rancho Viejo will be patrolled. We've still got more overhead to patrol, and we're gonna do a complete patrol, patrol of the underground facility as well, and replace everything that we see that has a problem or could potentially be a problem in the near future. A couple of other things we've done here is, we've done the overhead infrared, you know, finding bad connections or hotspots on our lines. We've done that the last three weeks. We've replaced two switchgear, which is, was mentioned in our last meeting there at the clubhouse, the main entrance, and I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but with the clubhouse out to the railroad tracks, there's a switchgear about halfway down, we replaced that too, last week, from, I forget, the two switchgear. And then, more of the, all of the distribution we've done so far, we're still doing more, build a line out here on Hidalgo, and eliminate a lot of exposure, and one of the expressway crossings out of Cortez, and put some protection on that as well. And that'll be done probably in the next four to six weeks. Questions on the distribution side?
I have a question. I live in Santa Ana, I have a battery that I use for my computer. I've taken my computer all day because the thing clicks off and, you know, they've got the buzzer sounds off, and you gotta go and reset the thing. And it's been working fine, but yesterday it went off four times. Now, what caused that all of a sudden to, to, to do that? And, you know, nothing else has seemed to be acting out of our advantage. It's just that one battery. Now, today it worked fine and hadn't gone off since, but yesterday, something was going on that caused surges, or, or it's low left it, or something that caused it to-
Is this a UPS volume gear?
Yeah, yeah. You know, so it just, like, it's going off so many times, I took it off a couple times. Maybe the battery backup's bad, but it doesn't do that every day, and just all of a sudden like yesterday, it just did it four every time.
After the meeting, get with me on your shot business.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If the Cabasos feed goes down, do we have other feeds that would pick it up?
Yes, sir, we do. We have Los Fresnos feed, the thirty-two hundred, as a standby. We have the temporary substation out on seventeen thirty-two, which we can pick up Rancho Viejo with that real easy.
Yes, sir. If Cabasos would go down, all of Rancho Viejo would be shut down. Like you said, all the other ones would pick it up. What's the downtime like? How, how fast is the other ones pick it up?
It depends on what the problem is and how much time it takes us to isolate it, find it, and reroute or repair.
If they date it?
I don't know. Twenty hours and that.
Have the transformer-
It's just gonna depend upon the situation on the outage. If they change mission lines, it'll take a week, hours. Well, if it's just some-
Wait, just, just- The, the substation transformer loss at Cabasos. They've installed a temporary transformer and substation on seventeen thirty-two, in case we have any problems at Cabasos Substation. That substation can be kicked in real easy and right back to power.
It's not fed from Cabasos?
It's fed on a, a different transmission line, it's fed on a hundred and thirty-eight KV line. Cabasos has been served out of a sixty-nine KV line. Two totally different systems.
That's the one called Cameron?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If all of the others will have one, we have the same app that Buddy showed a few minutes, and we'll, we'll show the Cameron Station and how it'll connect into, into Rancho Viejo, and, and you can see the overall picture, it's a couple of slides down. Hopefully, we can answer all your questions. Now, continuing with, with the preventative maintenance that Buddy was talking, that they've been doing on distribution, what we have in substation maintenance is we, we, on a monthly basis, do substation inspections. We have what we call services, servicers, patrolmen, and they're constantly doing inspections on, on all the stations that we have in the system, basically. And so, at least once a month, they're at the station, checking all the equipment out, making sure that everything's in order. We also do semi-annual battery maintenance, every six months, to verify that the batteries that supplies our control voltage to our equipment is, is in good shape, and to detect any, any, any problems coming that are basically building up, and, and basically intercept that problem before we have a, a complete failure. We also do circuit breaker maintenance. All these OCBs, you all hear about oil circuit breakers, we have vacuum breakers. We, we do breaker maintenance on our, on the, on basically, depending on the type of equipment, it's, you know, one section of the equipment every year, one seventh of the equipment every year. Transfer maintenance, we, we do a, what is a, basically a minor maintenance, which we test the transformers to find out the integrity of the wiring, and, and if we, we see a trend, and we, we keep all of our test reports, and if we start seeing a trend, then we take the unit out before we have a problem that we have at Cabasos. We also do our relay system maintenance, which is, our relay system is just basically a package that protects our equipment. When there's a down line, you know, if a driver hits a pole when the line goes down, protect the, basically, our, the community, basically the citizens, from, from getting into the line. And, and we do a, a maintenance on, on that relay package. And the last thing also is, we do predictive maintenance program. Basically, we have a crew that comes down, does infrared, checks for hotspots or equipment, does ultrasound on our transformers to see if there's any arcing going, taking place internally. And they also, they, they take samples of the oil to see if there's any gassing occurring internally in the transformer, which is, should be caught with the ultrasound on, on arcing going internally, but this is another sign of showing us our, the transformers wearing down internally. We, this is the system we have in place in, in our stations. A quick overview for most of you that were here last month, is our line maintenance summary is just showing you how much we've been investing in the, in our maintenance of the lines since two thousand and four. It's gradually been increasing, and of course, two thousand and seven is compared to two thousand and six, but we're only going on a third of the year at this point in time. And we, we talked also that as of April sixth, April second of this year, we're doing a more comprehensive inspection on the line sections, and that's basically, we've been infrareding our lines to find weak points before they take the line out and create a, a outage for, for any, any length of outage at this point in time. Yes, sir.
Can I read you those numbers that you've been, just letting it go, to tell it back to a point where it's unacceptable?
No, sir, those are the, that's just, we just go back to two thousand and four. We need to go further back than that. Two thousand and four, we did one section of the line, Brownsville switch to Cabasos. In two thousand and five, we did another section of, when I say line, it's the sixty-nine KV loop to, to that amount. In oh-six, we did Los Fresnos side of that loop to Brownsville, and in, in oh-seven, so far this year, well, we took care of the La Palma to Cabasos part of that loop, and it has its-
From oh-four to oh-six, it's, it's about twelve times.
Well, it's the, it has, it's a factor of the length of line. The Brownsville switch to Cabasos is not very long, as compared to the, the Los Fresnos to Brownsville. That's the longest segment of the line, of the loop, I'm sorry.
Joe, so that's taking into consideration what, what type of equipment was replaced in the line, the cost, you know, if you replace an insulator versus just the hardware, insulator, more dollars than, than the hardware, and cross arms, so, but the-
So, your outages in two, your outages in two thousand and four with twenty-two thousand spend would be comparable to what they were in two thousand and six, with twelve times as much spend? Or was it the number of outages that could just spend twelve times as much money?
I don't, I don't see a correlation there.
No. Outages and, and the maintenance, the dollars spent in the outages.
I, I would say that at this point, the entire sixty-nine KV loop has been, since two thousand and four, has been maintained at a higher level. We call it rehabilitation, maintenance. And, and just as, as a note for everybody's information, when we, when we rehab a line, we have inspected it and we've determined the components that need to be replaced. Those components on the transmission line are, consist of real simple lists, crossarms, poles, and insulators. And as I stated a while ago, the, the dollars amount to, they're, they're in direct correlation to the length of the line. So.
You, you gotta also look at the, the direction of the line, the way it's built and designed, you know, the terrain of it. You know, the, from point A to B could be one mile.
That's fine. You're saying there's no correlation, that's, that's fine.
What's the most likely thing to go on a line? What fails the most often? Do you see?
It depends, it depends, in this area, it would be the insulator.
Insulator?
Yes.
Because of the soft air?
Corrosion, yes.
Do you keep a computerized system that tells you what the life of those kind of things are? Like transformers, insulators, crossarms, whatever? So that you know how long a thing might last in this area?
We have, we have pretty extensive records going back, I guess, twenty-five years or so. You go back past, insulators and, and that kind of thing usually that lasts about twenty-five, thirty years. It really need to be, some places they last longer than that. It's, it's a, it's a factor of who made them, what year they were made, just like cars. Now, some years cars are, are built to a certain standard and next year they may not be built to that standard.
By the same company?
Uh, well, it's, it's a lot, I, 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 I don't know. Yeah, by the same company in some cases, you know. We go back thirty years.
What you're paying for it?
Now, well, generally, transmission equipment's made by the same manufacturers over year after year. So there's not a, there's not a big global manufacturer state.
Is there any difference in failure of insulators relative to the voltage of the line?
No, I wouldn't say that that's, that's too much of a factor. Because insulation is, the higher voltage gets an increased insulation.
Because last time they were here, I got the impression that a hundred and thirty-eight volt line was more reliable than a sixty-nine volt line. And I couldn't figure out why.
I think in this area, the one thirty-eight KV is gonna be newer than the sixty-nine. And the sixty-nine is, is an older vintage construction.
So it's just not inherently better? It's that the equipment is.
That's correct.
I got one question. I want to call this outage outbreak. Good way to put it, but how many are these caused by home builders, you know, building home construction?
Restate that question, yes, sir? Sorry.
Say again?
Re, restate that question.
How many of them are caused by home builders or construction, or others in homes? Just on the highway, causing a lot of flooding there, but how about the homes? And the builders, construction work going out of the town?
I'm not aware of any in this area that were caused by home builders.
Two of them were caused by building the expressway. That's about the only building that's about that.
And this, this next slide, again, we, we discussed it in the last month's meeting, just a quick overview is, this Cabasos station, after the failure, is we invested about four hundred thousand dollars in, in increasing the capacity at the location. And since we were already looking at carrying the whole Rancho Viejo community, it was a perfect timing to reset, to be able to tie the circuit and, and just have Rancho Viejo being served out of Cabasos. And that was completed in, in January of oh-seven. Immediately after that, we had talked, as we happened, this Cameron station is a temporary location. And we went in there and added a ten and a half NBA transformer in February of this year and invested a hundred and fifty thousand to, to increase the reliability for only Rancho Viejo community, but everyone else that's tied into the, to that feeder.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Why is Cameron station a temporary location? Since Mr. Pence just mentioned what a great, what an easy timing it would be to get that in, should we lose something from Cabasos? Why is that a temporary location? Or how temporary is it? Is it gonna be until two thousand and nine when Almito's going in?
You got, you got another slide.
Yes, sir. I have another slide, but if you'll allow me, and we'll, we'll go ahead and cover that and answer that question as well. The Almito station, that's an additional twenty-five NBA transformer capacity. It'd be completed in December of oh-eight, costing about four point eight million dollars. And, and this would be serving as a backup also for the Rancho Viejo community. And we'll see it right now in a few minutes on, on one of the, on the slide. The Los Fresnos station, that's a conversion that we'll be doing also, to be completed also in December two thousand and eight. It's, we're investing half a million dollars this year. And next year, investing five million dollars for the overall construction. And it'll be basically neck to neck with, with Cabasos and Almito. And as, as we see here at Cabasos station, it's a new station. We're moving the station about half a mile east of the existing location, converting to, and placing on the one thirty-eight line. It'll be completed in December of oh-eight, investing from two thousand and seven, half a million dollars also. And come next year, five point six million dollars for the construction. This is another backup for, for the Rancho Viejo community. This is the, the similar map that you saw on Buddy's presentation. You can see where, where the Rancho Viejo community is actually right in the middle of this whole thing. And Buddy described about La Palma Fire Plant at this location. We've got the red being the one thirty-eight coming all around. It's a, it's just a big loop for reliability. And you got the green on the sixty-nine. Basically, we have Cabasos right down here. And, and it's, that'll be moved over, as you can see now, on, on the red to the one thirty-eight. It'll still feed Rancho Viejo. There won't be any more changes or any changes whatsoever to what's already been done today with the feeder. So you'll be feeding off the CB thirty-five sixty. Now, we're also adding Almito here. It'll be a new breaker. It'll be tied into Rancho Viejo, but there'll be an open point that if thirty-five sixty wants to go out, and as Buddy mentioned, figuring out where the problem is at, how to pick it up and where to pick it up, we could pick it off of the Almito station, Rancho Viejo. And we'll always, we'll also have Los Fresnos. Los Fresnos moving from the sixty-nine KV transmission line over to the one thirty-eight. And we'll still have the circuit coming down that was feeding about a couple of weeks ago. Rancho Viejo, we're hot with Rancho Viejo in Tesoro and, and Cortez. And it has a backup as well. So now we'll have two additional venues that we can supply and pick up Rancho Viejo and kisers an outage on thirty-five sixty. Now, the question was, well, you know, a couple of people down the road and everything, depending where our isolation points were at in the distribution circuit, is, is who will be picked up? And that's the main thing. If it's the main feeder, and, and we've got an isolation point where we can, basically, everybody behind that, you're still gonna have a couple of, of customers out of service probably. But we'll pick, pick up the majority via either, either Almito or Los Fresnos. Now, where you were asking about, about Cameron. And Cameron, at this point in time, is just roughly right about this area right here. As we have this temporary, at this point in time, we're, we're looking into, into making it, it permanent until we, we convert Cabasos, we, we, and get Almito and Los Fresnos. There's just a couple of things we have to take care of with, with the Reliability Council of Texas and, and meeting their guidelines. But we are pursuing to, to be, that be more permanent instead of a temporary. But at this point in time, we are saying that it's, it's a backup. And like Buddy mentioned, depending, once we isolate, find where the point, where the, the bottom line is at, then we can, we can energize. Now, if it's, if the problem is on that thirty-five sixty past Cameron and there's a down line there, we were to energize that station, it would serve no purpose basically because, well, we could only pick up past that going back to Cabasos, but we wouldn't be able to pick Rancho Viejo because basically the, the line is down feeding Rancho Viejo. But we still have, at that point in time, the possibility that we can go back to thirty-two hundred and we'll be picking up, what was it, seventy percent, sixty percent of Rancho Viejo. And we'll be back temporarily at that point where everybody's saying, why was I out of line? But the people across the fairway weren't. But that would be a temporary.
Pete, go back to that slide. I may, I'm gonna tell the seminar. I, I think the important thing to note on the slide is, is that, is that Rancho Viejo and the three new substations that are gonna get built and, and we're scheduled to complete them by the end of next year, is that all Rancho Viejo can get picked up by any of these substances. Even though the normal feed is, is from Cabasos, that's, that's what's being planned by our distribution folks. If something should happen to the line that, that's out, you know, on the farm road that, that comes over to Rancho, car runs into it or whatever, it's gonna be backed up from these other locations that can pick up the whole town. Somebody asked, how long will it take to do that? Well, normally, you know, it's not an instantaneous flip over. And like, as Buddy was saying, we gotta, we've got to control, find out what the problems are. But typically, we're talking about a transfer with the dispatchers in control that would take something on the order of, I, I couldn't foresee it more than, than a couple of hours. Usually within about thirty to forty-five minutes to an hour, those kinds of, of switchovers can place. I, I just wanna make sure that people, people realize that the kind of outage we had with the Cabasos transformer, that was outage in January that took quite a while to, to repair, to replace, actually, that kind of an outage with this new system would be, it just wouldn't happen. One event couldn't put us in that situation.
His number was sixty percent and you're saying a hundred percent. Change, get over. He said sixty percent of Rancho would be okay.
That's an inclement weather like we had when we lost Cabasos substation and we lost the transformer.
Yeah, well, if you lose, if you lose Cabasos transmission line here and it goes out and you kick in Los Fresnos, will it feed everything that was coming from Cabasos? Or are we gonna be?
Yes, it should feed it all if we're not having real inclement weather, real cold weather where everybody's calling for heat at the same time.
You're saying it, it can't carry as much KV?
Well, Buddy, if I may, I'm on, on the transmission side of the business, but typically, our, our planners, our distribution planners will look at what, what the, what the load forecast's gonna be during extreme hot weather or extreme low weather. And the, the kind of station capacity we're gonna have with these new substations is much greater. So the, the next step that, that the planners have to do is, is to ensure that, that the distribution lines, the distribution lines are being improved. And, and they just, we just have to make sure that, that those distribution lines have adequate capacity to utilize the substation capacity we've been installing.
Right, but the question was, and a, and a comment made, was that sixty percent of Rancho Viejo was gonna get power and forty percent wasn't? And that had to do with the previous distribution system? So unless you change your current, current infrastructure within it, only sixty percent of Rancho Viejo's gonna have power?
But Cabasos.
The old, now, the old, no, not in a new situation.
Under the new situation.
Sixty percent.
I think, I think, I think Pete, elaborate on that, Pete, because I think.
What I was saying is that right now, we're in the new system. I, I don't know, Rick, if you can go back to the, the, the old thirty-five sixty and the Rancho Viejo, the blue and the brown.
Yes, exactly. You're saying is if the power went out and you switched over to the Cameron, the Los Fresnos system, the sixty percent that was in blue would have power and the forty percent that, Dan would not have power.
If, if we had to, depending where the, the problem is at, you know, where, where you have that open, that open link, you know, if, if we have to connect your, connect Rancho Viejo off of thirty-two hundred, you're going back to the old system the way you were a couple of weeks back.
And that means.
Okay, so it's like about sixty, forty, seventy, thirty.
So only, only sixty percent would get power?
Now, if, if we can tie you in, into the Cameron, the temporary station, then we're gonna pick up, that's tapped into thirty-five sixty, we'd be able to pick up a hundred percent of Rancho Viejo. And, and that's all depending on where the, the problem is at. You know, at that point in time, we, they'll be able to isolate and we're back to maybe not a hundred percent depending where the problem is at.
But Cameron feeds from, the Cameron feeds from the same thing as Cabasos, essentially. So if you have a, a down in the feed to Rancho, it doesn't make any difference whether you're on Cabasos or Cameron.
Unless it's a transmission problem.
You can't hook in thirty-two hundred to all of Rancho?
Yes.
Like, like Cameron or Cabasos is?
You can at, you can at this town, I believe.
Yes, we will be able to.
We will be able to. But I, what I was referring to was December of next year when we have all the capacity. And right now, we can, we can pick up all of Rancho off of the Los Fresnos feed. But I think that your intake load, I think we may, we may have somewhat of a problem in terms of, in terms of load capacity. Now, I guess Buddy, you're the one that.
The winter, the winter would be the.
Probably the, the summer would be okay, maybe a, a peak load condition and the winter would be, would be.
But when we have enough to have, to take care of the problem? We're talking two oh, eight, two oh nine?
If, if, December two thousand, December two thousand and eight. Gets back to what I was saying earlier. December of, I mean, of oh, yeah, December of oh-eight, about a year and a half down the road, we'll have, have all the new substations and all the distribution capacity.
And then we could take, then we'll be fed, either way, we'll, the whole place will be.
The whole town should be able to be served either three. Actually, from, from any of three locations.
Okay.
Sir, I'd like to ask a question too here. The same thing that you're saying, I'm sorry, I, but here, we've got Cabasos now. We got Los Fresnos we can feed from and we can feed from Cameron, the, the temporary station.
Right.
Right? Shouldn't we be able to take care of, of any hottest day of the year or any of the coldest day of the year? They should carry without a problem?
Oh, absolutely not.
We're, we're talking about, about a contingency where you have an outage.
It depends where you go down. If you go down right near Rancho Viejo, it doesn't make any difference if it's Cabasos or Cameron, you're gonna be down.
Yes.
And then you're gonna have to feed on Los Fresnos.
Yes, sir. Usually, we'll get the lines back up a lot quicker than, you know. If we lose lines on, on Cameron, we get it back up. It won't be like the winter where we have a station transformer, but, you know, it's a lot quicker picking up the distribution line.
But I was not corrected. Buddy was mentioning that there was additional equipment added where you can move it completely. I was thinking we, you know, we were able to move a point, an isolation point, and. Clear that. The, the next section is on, on the call center and Buddy will be able to, will be, doing the next part of the presentation.
Good evening. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for allowing me to be here to represent the finishing ceremony. I know there were some concerns that came up at the last meeting, and so I thought that this would be the opportune time for me to come down and introduce myself. And I am Betty Katie and I'm at the Customer Solutions Center in Texas. And I wanted to say kudos to the mayor. I mean, I, I just can't imagine any town that I, any place in the United States, a mayor goes out and greets the people that come to the city. So I'm telling you, y'all have an awesome mayor here. He is beyond awesome. I'm gonna be telling people about. I'm going to be telling people about you back home if our mayor can do the same thing. Anyway, before we leave this evening, I'm hoping, and my goal is, I just have a couple of slides, so it's not going to be a real long presentation, so don't be saying, oh my God, she's going to go online, but I'm not. I'm going to try and get a high level understanding of what we do and a better understanding of our outage management system. So who are we? We are available to take your calls at the call center. We have six call centers actually in AEP, which are scattered over eleven states. And if the first available agent gets the next call, we try to avoid busy signals at all cost if that's possible. And I just kind of wanted to use an example because your mayor is connected to all of you. And just for example, if you have a water main break and it's in, maybe at noon and you're having washing dishes and everybody's washing clothes and then all of a sudden the water main breaks, so what happens? Well, you know the mayor because he knows everybody, right? And so you call him to the mayor, and I don't know how many lines he has in his office, but let's just say for this example, he has two. So he's talking to one of you and his secretary is talking to the other person, and what about the other five or six of you that are calling in? Well, he's going to be getting a busy signal. So that's why the virtual system is so unique because we don't have to hand out busy signals and that's the main concept that we have here. Agents handle all types of calls, but the outage calls are the priority. So the virtual concept is so unique and it's really in not just the AEP call center, it's in so many businesses and that you deal with daily also. Live agents was mentioned. Well, live agents is very important because we have to have a live agent to help us identify the first, you might be the first caller on the circuit. So what, what does the first call, couple of first people that call in say? You might give information like, there's, I heard a loud pop. And our agents are going to ask you these questions. Did you hear a loud bang or a loud pop? Well, that could lead us, lead us right to the point that possibly there's a transformer that's on. Or it could be that you cited a vehicle accident and you're calling in to report that and that could be the cause of the outage. Well, instead of our servicemen going all over and patrolling the lines trying to figure out where the problem is, you've helped us identify that. So yes, it is very important to have a live agent. And the first call to come into the circuit, this is why we love to have agents available. They also provide better information to our dispatch center. Our dispatch center, of course, we don't have radio communication in the call center where I'm with feet, but we communicate all electronically. So to better get information to our dispatch center and to the people in the field, we have computers and as soon as you send us the information, we send out the trouble ticket, it goes to the field and they can better access where the problem is. Automation comes into being whenever we have grown to the larger outages. We have to rely on automation to avoid busy signals and extended wait times. We have our voice response unit and we also have our HBCA, which is High Volume Call Answering Service, and it can handle up to a hundred thousand calls per hour, believe it or not. It is absolutely amazing. So you place your order and you're, and as you place your order, I guess go back one slide because I wanted to say something about, let me see, about the automation. You really have to rely on automation. When you call in to the eight hundred number, it's actually an eight six six number, but when you call in, if your telephone number is in the system, it's going to match up with your account and it's going to feed some information back to you. And at that point, if you answer those questions and punch one for this and two for that and give it the information that it actually needs, what it's going to do is, it's going to process your order. The order is going to flow directly out to the truck, to the dispatch center, to the truck. And by you not having to get anything more than just talk to the telephone. So this is what's so unique about automation. So the next thing that we rely on heavily is messaging. Messaging is something that you're going to say after you've placed your order and you're talking to some of your neighbors and you say, you know, I just wonder if, what the timeframe is, I wonder how long it's going to take before we're going to find out when our service is going to be restored. Timeframe is very important to you. We know what customers want to know. You want to know, do you know that I'm out? You also want to know, how long is it going to be before I'm restored? And a lot of times you want to know what was the cause. So we put upfront messages, so when you call into the system, you can hear when the approximate time, when the serviceman gets to the field and he estimates when he perceives, if it's going to be four hours, if it's going to be six hours, if it's going to be a day, depending if it's a large outage or a small outage, we can put this in our upfront messaging. So when you call in, you can hear this, this very important information. And because we're all so busy, you don't need to actually, this is what you need. And we kind of coordinate this same messaging at the same time whenever the media, possibly during a large outage, you have the media usually meeting about three times a day. And we have our meeting also and coincide that information with the messaging that you will also see in the newspaper, on the radio or your television. So this is a real, real important aspect to you, the customer, because you want to know these timeframes, you want to know possibly what the cause was, how long we're going to be down. Another question that came up was charges. And if you're the first caller on, this is the first few callers on the system again, the system hasn't really identified that there is an outage. You're the first caller, remember? There may be a call that came in from over here, another call that came in from over here, it hadn't really tied or thanked you. So if you're the first caller that calls in, our agents are going to ask you some questions. First question usually they're going to ask you is, have you checked your breakers? That seems to be a little offensive to some people, but if you're the first caller, keep in mind that we haven't identified where the problem is. So they're going to say, have you checked your breakers? And believe me, it's really for the customer's sake at the onset of an outage like that because you wouldn't believe how many callers, they have just tripped their breaker. And so instead of our servicemen having to make a trip out to the field and us having to charge you a pretty hefty fee just to have our serviceman come out there and tell you, man, you didn't, just needed to reset your breaker, we will charge you for that. So that's kind of the basis behind that. They're going to ask you a whole lot of other questions too, but it's just, it's in a scripting and because the outage has not been identified in the field. So once it's identified, we call that an unknown outage and we know that it's an outage, when you call in, it will automatically tell you that we know that your power is out. It's a new system that I just found out before I walked out the door today, that on May the sixteenth, when you call in, there, if the servicemen put the information into the, of the time of restoral and even the cause, whether it was an animal, whether it was an accident, and they've identified what it is, it's automatically going to feed that information back to you in a voice response where you never really have to talk to a person. This is going to be in on May the sixteenth and we're real excited about that information. So that was kind of new and I thought that I'd share that with you, but it's not right in there now, but we still do put messaging and everything else that I've talked about up to this point. How can you help as a customer? I guess the main thing is that if you don't have your phone number updated in the system, it would really be a great idea because it's going to help you walk through the system better, it's going to help our agents, if your phone number's in the system and you do talk to an agent, on the screen, on their computer screen, your account automatically pops up to them. Yes, they still have to ask you the questions to identify certain criteria that they need to fill out the trouble ticket, but it's going to make the process so much faster for you and less frustrating for you. So that's one thing that I encourage you to do. The other thing that I encourage you to do is to trust the system. Now, automation is here and it's used in so many businesses and most of you probably have it also. So trust the system. And also keep in mind that it's not a real new solution center. I was there whenever they kind of first started building it and I know that we've grown a whole lot and we have made a lot of mistakes along the way, but we're always welcome, welcoming new ideas, new information, something that you say, why don't you try this? You know, we're open to those types of suggestions and I'm always there. I'm the shortest one and I have the two shortest little names, Betty Katie, so you can always call me if you have any questions. I would just, I'd love, if you would call me and ask me some questions, I would love to help you.
Any questions on any of this? There's your customer service.
Just another question. If, say fifty to twenty homes, all of a sudden they lose their electric down one street, maybe San Diego, nothing triggers back any response that you often pick up anyway on the computers to let you know that there is a pretty major outage?
I'd tell somebody.
Once we get that, I'll plead our first call into the call center.
Yes, and it kind of starts pinpointing, little pinpoints out there. I've been at the dispatch center and it kind of shows little, little pinpoint of where they can see if the outage come in. So you've got an outage over here, an outage over here, until they actually see it. And it may be a whole lot of little dots in this one certain area and then they're able to, like he says, customer ties, tie them all together and pinpoint whether it's a transformer, whether it's a substation, whether it's a reclosure, those types of ties. Right, Dr. Don?
That's correct. So who unless we need power and run a phone or a trouble?
It's an automated system, but it gets triggered by the calls and it's got some intelligence. And what it does, you know, typically you have a transformer serving civil homes, for example, and that transformer may have another piece of protective equipment like a reclover or fuse. So the intelligence behind the system that he works with, after a few calls come in, it starts to guess, well, it's probably this transformer, well, it's probably this fuse. And that's where, you know, some of that information gets over to Buddy and his folks so that they can home in on what the problem is.
The last time we had the major, you know, we still didn't know how long it was going to be down, so we're still kind of calling and trying to learn how long it's going to be down. And then you get ahold of somebody that starts asking you all these silly questions, well, have you gone out and checked your circuit breaker? I said, look, our electric's been out for twenty-four hours. The whole town is out, I'm just trying to figure out how long it's going to be. But sir, I have to ask you these questions, give me your, you know, to go through this big, long list of asking all these silly questions when you're trying to find out how long we're going to be down. And you get frustrated with them, you know, just hang up the phone, I mean, you know, just.
Well, I certainly can understand, of course, as Buddy was saying, probably our agents have been instructed to do that. The only thing I can say is, in the future, when we have an event that's going to have an extended outage, that if there's any way we can pass some of that information on Buddy, we can try, but it's, but I know it's, it's hard to do because calls come in from all over the state, but Buddy.
But it's not only that, it is tied in. If the servicemen fill out the information and it's fed back to our system, whenever you called in and they located your account, that information should have been on there and that agent should have been able to give you some information that was on the system. It should have been there.
Well, I spoke to a person in Fort Worth because I asked him, I said, well, where are you right now? Where are you, buddy?
In Fort Worth.
I'm in Fort Worth.
We don't have it in one in Fort Worth.
Can it be action change?
We don't have it in Fort Worth.
All right, so I'd say, three forty maybe? Huh? Three forty? Maybe, maybe three forty.
Okay, we have three forty, you know, it's also different, but not Fort Worth, probably was one of those. But they, they should have been able to give you the information if the information was available to us, they should have been able to, because it's right on the screen and they just have to check it. But just like he said, if the customer type on there, maybe the information wasn't fed into the system.
You can ask for a supervisor.
Don't ask for one?
Ask.
Oh, ask for one.
Customer, baby.
You can do that.
You talked about having your correct phone number registered because when you call in, it automatically, when it powers out, your phone don't work, so you're not using your home phone anyhow.
Well, it asks you to input the phone number. If you go, are going through the automated system, it asks you to input the phone number that you're going to report the outage for and that will bring out.
Do you realize how much, do you remember if somebody called in for me to borrow a phone?
A regular landline phone, mine always does.
I mean, it's just, it's just a question.
Not if you're plugged into the electricity. A regular landline works on batteries.
Mine requires power to it.
Some of those, we've got one that does, one that doesn't by itself. Betty, on the website?
Yes, sir.
We were down for a day or two and went to the website and said, no major power outage in your area. That wasn't a very friendly message.
That is not friendly. Jerry Don was going to address that.
Yeah, that was, that was our fault. It was. We didn't have, a lot of us were in Austin and we, at that time, and we just didn't input the information that was needed. And, and we learned that from that, like I told you last time, by Rancho Viejo, and we want to make sure that doesn't happen again to any other cities.
Wilson, do you have a question?
One question that probably won't get answered, but is there any difference between whether you go through CPL or TXU or neither of the markets?
Excuse me, this Wilson's asking, let's have one after the meeting with y'all.
My question was, is there any difference between marketing's company that you're with, whether it's TXU or CPL or whoever's in, as far as your actions to get things done?
Actually, we are the wires company and those are the choice, the providers of choice. And so it is your choice, the provider you choose, but the provider company, I mean, the lines companies don't need AEP.
I know that. The answer, the answer, sir, is that we don't recommend anybody.
And there's no difference. And there's no difference.
There's no difference to the service.
There's no difference in how we.
Then if our electric is down and as I said, we don't call AEP, but if we're going to maybe TXU or CPL, whatever it may be, if we call these people, do they have the update information of what AEP has?
They tell you, call AEP. That's what our service provider told us. They said, you need to call your service provider.
Maybe I called TXU in Fort Worth, maybe that was the problem.
And if you look on your bill, it says, call AEP for OEGs. It's on typically, but now in Texas and it says that on the.
Now, that outage number is on your bill and it's separate than your regular customer service number.
All right, anyone else got any questions? Do y'all?
I just want to make sure that everybody, there's all the questions that they want to ask, and I thought, this is our follow-up and we just wanted to make sure. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here, appreciate it and we're excited, I'm excited about what we've done for Rancho Viejo, I really am. I think we've done some great improvements within the last thirty-five days here and we have a lot of backup substations to take care of that and verify that, we do. If we lose Colossus, we got back up with Cameron, we got back up with Los Fresnos and vice versa with the rest of them. I think, and the last time I told you when I was here, that reliability of service here is going to skyrocket after what we've done and I'll still stick to that. And it's been, what, thirty days now? You haven't had no power yet?
No.
Forty-six days it was out.
We had one yesterday.
I can't control that.
We had, we had one yesterday. It was a momentary, but I have to go back and redo the clocks.
Doesn't count unless it's five minutes.
Yeah, it was less than.
Unless it's five minutes.
It was less than five minutes. It was just.
I have a question.
My clocks all go crazy.
Just a question over here.
Mr. Wilson, Chris Davis, I'm obviously the videographer here. Apparently a resident has emailed the town asking for a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. Can that be provided to either me or the town and enable the town to put it up on their website? Apparently they're not able to view it very well online when they view the video and it's very informative apparently, this PowerPoint.
You're talking about the PowerPoint presentation?
That's correct, that's what I'm talking about. Is that something that can be shared with the town and they could view it online?
I don't know about some of the transmissions that come in or not.
Or could you give us a version that gives us as much information as possible?
Yeah, we can do that.
Cleaned up, possibly emailed the town and I believe their webmasters will be able to put that online for viewing.
Okay.
Residents leader, thank you.
Before we adjourn, one question is that I don't know anything about electricity, I don't know anything about these substations, about all the equipment and all of that kind of stuff, and I really don't want to learn. I know that when you turn a switch on, the power comes on, but I will say this, since the last meeting we had in April, in this meeting now, I've had more communication and meetings with AEP than ever in the last year and a half, year, year and three quarters. Mr. Finch has been by six or seven times, Sam Silva came by for a meeting, I've seen a lot of activity out there. I am really happy to report that they have been very, very responsive. I hope it all works and I hope it all comes out. If it doesn't, we'll do something about it, but they have really responded and done a good job responding and keeping us informed that they have, you know. good job responding and keeping us informed at the town. Anyone else?
I'd like to say something. I would like to thank you, Mayor, for taking the initiative to getting these people back over here because I have seen some changes and I've seen these people working real hard. So I do hope that these problems will be taken care of and I thank you for your interest and all the citizens of Rockville.
Number fourteen, you hear a motion to adjourn? Any seconds?
There are.
All things...